All right. Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, in order to be conducted in hybrid fashion. We have two items to add to the agenda. Is there a motion to add item one? Consider take possible action to set a public hearing December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at eight thirty a.m. in the Town Hall. Advise Zoom to amend the ordinance for a temporary moratorium on cannabis establishment in the town of Guilford. The amendment will extend the moratorium until April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Um, any comments or questions?
Moving down to the agenda.
We're going to move with the agenda and we'll do that probably after the approval of minutes. Okay, so that's five A. And then is there a motion to?
Hold on that first.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me try your minds.
Well, I.
Right.
That was carried. And item number two is add to the agenda. An appointment of Jim Goodrich to the Board of Assessment Appeals. And um, return to expire November fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. The appointment of Alan Fairbank to the Hazard Mitigation Commission to fill vacancy term to expire September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And then the reappointment of Karen Stevens to the EDC term to expire November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. There's our motion to do so.
So, second.
And any comments or questions? And we'll move that into the appointments and resignations section. So those will be seventy-nine respectively. Okay, try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Uh, all right. Charles, would you start please?
I plead allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Charles. Public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item five.
Yeah, there's, I'm just, there's one person on Zoom with the phone, phone only, just curious.
Yeah. Trey, do we have ever understanding who's on, on the phone? Whoever's on the phone, could you identify yourself, please? What's the number? Is it two oh two number?
Jeff Hawking.
I think it's Jeff Hawking.
Jeff Hawking's number? Okay. Good, thank you. Um. All right, approve minutes. Is there a motion to approve the November fifteenth Capitol Plan meeting minutes? And a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, changes, et cetera? Hearing none, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, five dot two. Uh, the approval of minutes from November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Any comments, questions, changes, et cetera? Hearing done, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Right, five dot A, which is consider and take possible action to set a public hearing date of December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, to amend the ordinance, basically given us till April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Be pretty obvious why doing that, uh, based on an agenda item later in the, uh, in the agenda. Uh, is there a motion to send that day? Yeah, and a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion here. All right, here we go. Rapid fire. Appointments and resignations. Uh, act on the resignation of Jennifer Rao from the Housing Authority. Is there a motion to, uh, with appreciation and regret?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
And a second? Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, six dot two, act on a recommendation to appoint Eric Howell Bauer to the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission to fill a vacancy for term to expire September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that motion carries in hours. Six dot three, act on a recommendation to reappoint Paul Wederman to the Agricultural Commission for a term to expire on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-six. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, six dot four, act on a recommendation to reappoint Pam Mertor to the Youth and Family Services Board for a term to expire on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carried. Excuse me, six dot five, act on a recommendation to appoint Rich Evans as an alternate to the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Uh, let me try your minds. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Nate.
Okay. Um, item six dot six, act on a recommendation to appoint Tim Galvin to the Housing Authority to fill a vacancy for your term to expire on March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second it. Great, thank you. Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say?
Yeah, can I, just one thing on Tim Galvin's. Am I reading this correctly? There's the, the, uh, notes say, application for the Housing Authority, his, his application says Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission.
Trey?
Yep, if you see at the top of it, they made a note, he initially applied for that, but then decided, um, he would best better serve on the Housing Authority. Yeah.
Thank you. I see that in the top corner.
Yep.
Thank you.
So if I can make a comment, there are two applications that came through Republican Town Committee that we do not have on our agenda for action. And in both cases, there was, there were questions about term limits and about majority, um, bare majority rules.
Right.
So it's my understanding that we're taking a look at those and culture deal back in the next week.
Next meeting on this. Yes. Thank you. Uh. Okay, uh, that was approved right there.
Yes.
Um, six dot seven, uh, appointment of Jim Goodrich to the Board of Assessment Appeals, return to expire November fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Let me make a distinction. This is one of the, uh, appointments that we're making. This is not to fill an unexpired seat at this point. Uh, city party, I design. Um, and already two Democrats on, uh, and, um, uh, in consultation with Attorney Barrett, um, we believe that the bare majority rule, uh, is extended to all elected boards, not just Board of Education, Board of Finance. And so, uh, you know, in order to maintain the, uh, not maintain, in order to be consistent with the state statutes, you are supposed to replace with, uh, someone of the same party, if practicable, uh, which is open to some level of discussion. Um, and, uh, so we're going to, uh, appoint Jim to one of the, uh, additional, um, the Board of Assessment positions that the board by charter is allowed to appoint. We're allowed to appoint up to three. We have two in there currently, and this will be the third.
He was already on as an alternate, is that correct?
No, he was not. There is, there are no alternates. There are appointees.
He's told me, maybe, oh, maybe he was on the Board of Assembly. Okay, it's all right. Yes, if I have to.
So we're applying the, uh, extended bare majority rules differently in this case than we?
No, we are. No, we are. The Charter allows for the Board of Selectmen to appoint three additional members to help during when the tax appeals.
Okay.
We have two appointed already, and this is the third that we'd be allowed to appoint. And this does not upset their majority rule if you include these three plus the two sitting members.
Okay.
Got it? Sorry, I wasn't cleared earlier.
So there's, this is, with those five altogether, regardless of how they got there, elected or appointed, there's only three from one party.
Correct.
With Mr. Goodrich ascending.
Yes. Okay.
Just to clarify, you, you, in, in your explanation in the beginning, you, you said something to the effect of party seats or something like that, you know, when you're trying to describe the bare majority rule.
Right.
And I don't think that is the, is, is accurate as a party can't have more than the bare majority. Right. So it's not your feeling.
Feel exactly.
You're just feeling the number of seats so that no party has more than the bare majority.
Correct, correct. Uh, but the complication is on an elected position because state statutes apply. Our bare majority rule is a charter provision. Uh, the, uh, replacement of elected officials is a statutory, uh, one.
I see.
So.
We don't have to appoint party for party. We just can't appoint more than the bare majority.
Um.
So if the seat is held by a particular party, it doesn't necessarily have to be filled by that same party. It cannot be filled by the party that would have more than the bare majority.
Correct. So we couldn't put Jim in that spot. Uh, okay.
Well, you thought it was easy.
Exactly. So the interesting, the term of art is if practical, right? Uh, on the state statute, so, uh, I'm sure we can let Pete weigh.
Lawyers good love.
Yeah, exactly. If practical. Can you parse that for us?
Not contemplating.
All right, uh, let me, let me try your minds on, on appointing Jim to the seat.
I'm sorry, I don't, you don't have any documents?
On Jim? No, I know, all we do have is, uh, he is, he is on a couple of, he has been on a couple of other boards.
I'm moving in documents when he got on the other one. Uh, I guess it's his own.
Trey, what, Trey, what is, uh? What is he on? Z B A?
On, he used to be. I'm looking now. Yes, he's on Z B A. He's an alternate.
Sounds like a strong personal recommendation.
But we should have it, but we should still have it. We'll, uh, we'll follow up with that. Uh, okay, so did we, so we called the question?
We have.
Thank you. All right. Uh, okay, six dot eight.
We didn't vote, right?
We haven't voted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, abstaining, recusing, motion carries. Six dot eight, the appointment of Alan Fairbank to the Hazard Mitigation Commission to fill a vacancy term to expire September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second as well.
Uh, finding, finding candidates for that board is, uh, difficult. So it's great that Alan's stepping up.
Yeah.
Justice way of, uh, Alan, uh, later in life went back to, uh, school for another master's degree. He's got a bunch of them. Um, and he has, uh, his, his thesis was on coastal resilience, particularly here. Uh, potential for tide gates and for sea walls. Uh, I'll share it with you all. It's an interesting document, uh, which will probably go, uh, to, uh, help inform our coastal resilience plan as well as our plan of comprehensive, uh, P O C D. Uh, okay.
Same problem.
Same problem, yeah.
I now happen to know Mr. Fairback as well, uh, and would also unequivocally recommend this, as I did with Mr. Goodrich.
Okay.
Uh, I, I actually have the backup on it. I'm sorry, I forgot. It came in late on Friday. I forgot to forward it to you. I'll forward it to you now. I have their applications and the recommendations. So I'll forward it to you now.
That'd be helpful. Due diligence.
On the other hand, on the strength of the recommendation, I, I, okay with that.
Thank you.
I would love to know more about these people that are willing to do this.
Okay, um, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, recusing, motion carries. Uh. Excuse me, uh, six dot nine, a reappointment of Karen Stevens to the Economic Development Commission term to expire November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Is there a motion? Okay. And second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, recusing. Okay, item seven. Uh, request for use of town property. Um. Seven dot one, act on request from the Community Nursery School, green, place assigned on the green advertising its little folks for June third, two thousand and twenty-three, and assign placement by twenty to six three, six twelve, six three. Is there a motion?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusing, motion carries. Seven dot two, act on request from moms to be in action to use the green on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two for its holiday gift drive. Is there a motion?
Just have a concern. I don't know if that's actually the group needs, our requirements, but why, I don't know why this would be necessary. They're gonna, oh, set up a table with three people and collect them.
Uh.
Do they need to even do this?
Uh, use of the green.
Dictated by the number.
I, I thought there was a little, yeah, I thought there was a small.
Well, it's forty, but, um, you know, every year at Easter, we approve the, uh, the plant sale, uh, on the green. And, and so I think, um, that, but that's, that's the selling stuff on the green, so.
And this is the other way, but I guess, I guess I see it as, there may be three people working this, but a number of other people appearing, and it's going to sort of have, in theory, people coming up and dropping big thoughts. I, I, there's, it's over, it's over fountain suspenders a little bit, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping to get around the fact that I, I don't, I don't know. I don't think this is a, I don't want to say free organization.
They are.
They are. They are. Oh, okay. Okay, great.
Okay, so, uh, is there a motion?
Some.
Yep, and a second?
I'll second.
Second. Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Um, seven dot three, act on request from the country school to place a sign on the green advertising its open house on January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, sign placement one eight to one twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed, abstaining, recusing, motion carries. Uh, item seven dot four, act on request from the Guilford Rotary Place to sign on the green advertising its annual Frosty Five K Road Race on January one, two thousand and twenty-two, sign placement twelve eighteen to one one. Lou, you gotta make that recommendation?
Make that recommendation.
Is there, anyone else from Rotary? That's a second.
Just a point, it's, would be January one, two thousand and twenty-three.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-three, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
I will do that.
Otherwise, we can, otherwise, we can just use last year's shirts.
I will do that myself, but I can find it when somebody else does it, but my stuff will have twenty twenty-two for months to come.
All right, uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
My, my eye vote is contingent upon, uh, Mr. Federici, uh, attempting to run the road race. They went out running for the first time in months yesterday.
Running, running in air quotes.
Run walk.
Okay.
All right, um, if, motions, uh, been made, uh, is, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, um, committee reports. But, um, correspondence. Old business? Um, new business? Item twelve, Director Human Resources, Mitch. Uh, twelve dot one is to remove, uh, from the table, take possible action on a recommendation from the Pension Committee regarding cost of living adjustments, COLA for current pensioners.
Could I just make a statement? Um, I would just like to say that the, that the outcome of this decision may, uh, personally affect me as I am collecting a town pension, so I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion and the vote.
Thank you. Uh, is there a motion to remove her from the table?
I'll make the motion to remove, in favor?
And is there a second? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, Mitch.
Good morning. Um, so once again, we're here to, uh, have you, uh, take action of some sort concerning a cost of living adjustment for, uh, the police and then possibly for the other, uh, arguments as well. Where you are required by the police contract to act on that group, and then it's up to you if you want to act on the other two as well. I provided you significant information. Uh, you requested, um, in form of several spreadsheets. If you have any questions about anything, let me know. Uh, just to reiterate, this, uh, typically goes to the Pension Committee to review after the actuary has made the report. Uh, Pension Committee voted to recommend not giving a cost of living adjustment at this time, uh, with the final decisions in your hands. And, um, it's pretty much it unless you have any questions for me.
You want to have any questions from Mitch?
So the Pension Committee, um, recommended that we not give an increase to everyone, not specifically. So they didn't get, give the opinion of us specifically?
No, they didn't. No, they just, they just made a recommendation not to award a pay cost of living adjustment at this time, this year.
And, and their notes are very thorough, very detailed, and appears every person who commented on the board, pension board, was of that same opinion. It does not appear it was a.
And there was one abstention.
Abstention.
There was one abstention. Yeah, there was a newer member of the board who, uh, uh, felt a little uneasy voting either way at that point. I don't want to speak for him, uh, but abstaining from the vote. So it was unanimous, save one abstention.
Okay.
Where do we stand with the complaint?
Complaints have been filed. The municipal prohibitive practice that's been filed by the police union is supposed to be heard, uh, this Wednesday.
Do you have any advice, attorneys, that move forward?
Yes, uh, the advice of counsel is to move forward with the decision today. Pete, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, there, there's, uh, no reason not to move forward. I would move forward.
Okay, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Mitch, are the retirees that would be subject to this still in the union?
No, no, but once someone retires from, uh, the town and no longer represented by a bargaining unit, uh, there's no, uh, retiree bargaining unit that, that I'm aware of. Uh, but we, once someone retires from the town or leaves service from the town, we no longer, uh, represented by the union. It's, it's interesting, the municipal prohibitive acts we have is, uh, interesting because it would potentially affect, um, the retirees, but is the M P P is brought on behalf of the current police officers. That's the only way they can do that, in my, in my understanding.
Okay.
Other questions?
And Mitch, you provided a lot of information and graphs, spreadsheets. Thank you. Very, very helpful. And the one that comes to my eye, I may have asked, although you may have had it already, is the, uh, COLA police by age. And it appears to provide police pensioners by age. And if I'm reading that correctly, roughly forty percent are over the age of sixty-five. I'll put it the other way around. Sixty percent are under the age of sixty-five.
Just, that looks, that looks approximately correct.
Okay. And, and, and we wouldn't necessarily have this. Not necessarily germane to our, your responsibility, but do you happen to know how many of the folks in that list are working in some other way?
I do not know.
Okay.
I know some, I know some of them are.
Yeah, that might be anecdotal.
I don't, yeah, that's, I, I really don't know, you know, how many. A lot of them do leave, uh, after twenty years or so of service. Often, because I do an exit interview, uh, I'll learn that they are, uh, leaving for another position somewhere, but that's, uh, I don't know if they still have that position. And I, I don't keep track of. What I try to keep track of is their current address, their phone number, their email, how to contact them. Uh, I don't keep track of their, of their employment status.
That's certainly something that's permitted by the contractor.
Of course.
Suggesting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's.
No, but it, it's a factor in considering how essential, uh, an increase would be. I mean, it just is a factor. I mean, this is, this is a cold calculation at this point. And it, from our perspective, we're trying to weigh the pros and cons, recognizing for any individual, there could be some serious impact. Again, I mean, it's not lost on me that per individual, it could really make a big difference. But overall, balancing the needs of the town, the needs of these retired officers, you know, the taxpayers. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, every one of those factors moves the needle a little quicker.
Mitch. Mitch, can you give me an example of what might be a mitigating factor that we've been overriding Pension Committee's recommendation?
No. It's, it's certainly your, your decision whether you feel that they have erred in their, um, uh, decision-making. Typically, this board, at least as long as I've been here, has a followed recommendation of the, uh, the Pension Committee. But it's certainly, it's your discretion. In fact, if I can quote from both the police contract and the M P P, uh, which, which have mirrored language, um, the Board of Selectmen, after receiving the refer, the, the report referred to in the preceding paragraph, shall have the right and sole and exclusive, sole and exclusive discretion to make adjustments to the payments being made with former police employees retired under this plan, this plan being the police retirement plan.
Um, but the complaint is addressed to us or to the pension?
To the town. Any, 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 any complaint like that, just the normal course of business. It is filed with the town clerk, it is brought to the town, um, and, uh, our labor attorney will be defending the town on this, uh, Wednesday.
Anything further? Anything further? All right, is there a motion to either grant the COLA or not grant COLA at this point?
I'll make a motion to grant the COLA for the police pensioners.
Okay. Is there a second? For discussion purposes, at least.
I'll make a motion for discussion purposes. I'll second the motion.
Anything further?
I possibly ask you to just give a little insight of why you choose to override the pension.
I, I don't think that is overriding the Pension Committee, because my understanding is the Pension Committee did not make a recommendation on the COLA for just the police pensioners. That's why I have the reason to ask that question. Their recommendation was for everyone. And the point that I've made before that I stand by is that the police contract is the contract that requires them to service periodically. The other contracts don't, and I believe, I mean, having participated in not, not as many negotiations as some, but certainly in a lot of my fourteen years, um, is that things don't just end up in contracts, is that there's give and take on everything. And perhaps something would have been give and take on another point, if you don't want that not to be in there.
But isn't that the point, though, I think that Mitch has made, is that, that, that discussion is for contract negotiation, not for, so.
But it's in the contract. Suggestion that we consider it is in the contract.
Okay, and, and we are considering it. That's not my question. My question is, you had, uh, indicated by your motion that you would support doing it. Not so much that we, you know, we're considering it. We've already done that. Now, the, the, the question I'm asking is why you would choose to override. Well, I guess you're, you're thinking is that the Pension Committee, Pension Committee's decision is not to grant any COLAs, Mitch?
I'm reading, I just pulled up the motion. The motion was that, uh, I'll read right to the minute. Steve Pops made the motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that you not grant COLA at this time. That was the.
So your interpretation of that is not to grant COLA across the board, period?
That'd be my interpretation, yes.
And, and the reason that happens is because when we, when we go to Milman, we as a board ask for all three of them. And that, uh, right, the impact of all three of them, regardless of whether or not it's required in any of the other contracts. Um, so it's not the Pension Committee that is considering the three. It is, you know, who initiated the consideration of all three. They are only required to do what we ask of them. And we had, we had traditionally, as long as I've been doing this, have asked them to look at all three plans. Uh, so in previous, uh, cycles, uh, the same thing happened. They look at all three plans. But they are only, we are only obligated to look at the police one.
Right.
And I, and I think I have maybe wasted too much oxygen in the past on this, um, but I will do so again. And that is an issue of equity, uh, just because it is in the police, uh, contract, because it was put in there as, as a concession or as a result of a concession made, uh, at the time, um, as a multiplier, uh, on the, uh, retirement factor uh, for the retirees, if I'm not mistaken, Mitch.
Well, that goes back to nineteen eighty-six, which I'm not sure what the negotiations were involved. Um, there has been, there has been subsequent, um, negotiations that have affected the multiplier.
Right.
But just let me say that, uh, in my research, uh, I believe that any time, even though this has been in the, uh, police contract since nineteen eighty-six, uh, so we're going on about thirty-six years now, um, any time the Board of Selectmen awarded a cost of living adjustment, it was awarded to both the police and the other, the other plans as well. So that if you go back into the other plans, you'll see the, the amendments made to the Police Retirement Fund. There are mirrored, uh, amendments made to the, both the Board of Ed Plan and to the, uh, Town Employees Plan. So each, each time it's, each time it's been done, it's never been bifurcated or trifurcated. I'm not sure the correct word is, that it would only go to one, not the others, although it is your discretion.
Can I, uh, this may actually be for MJ as well. Uh, Mr. Bauer, in his notes, in, in the notes from the pension minutes, says he's concerned about adding, this is a big range, so I'm not sure why it has this big range, concerned about adding one to five million dollars to COLA in COLA, which will affect Guilford taxpayers. Is that, is there, if by granting this, is, is the, is the range there because the difference between just adding the police, adding? adding the police and all the other potentially eligible candidates, why is there such a big range that he's stating there?
Mitch has the minutes, but I believe we looked at the COLA in two different ways. I forget the percentages. So it reflected all, all three plans based on different ways of looking at how much COLA would be given.
I see.
I can help with that.
Yeah.
That's right, you should have in your, in your documents there, the Milliman study, but I can quickly refer to it. It's dated June ninth, twenty twenty-two, and attached to.
I want to see that.
Attached to that is, there's three different pages, one for the impact on the employees' plan, the second one's the impact on the police plan, the third one's the impact on the school employees' plan. And they show, I'm not even sure why, but it's always been, been shown as a full COLA versus a sixty percent CPI. So if you take the minimum of all three, you're looking at, well, if you just look at the police sixty percent, it'd be one point eight million, just for the police and just for sixty percent.
Per year.
Well, that's your total, that's your total, that's your total impact on the change.
But, but is that per budget year? I was only trying to get at.
If you look at budget, each budget year, if you go to the top, so let's start there. So eight hundred and seventy-six thousand for the police plan, that's sixty percent. Another, almost the same amount for the school employees, and one point one five, one point one five-five million for the employees' plan. So you're looking at, at minimum, if you go across the board here, one, six, about a three million dollar impact to the, to the town. I'm sorry, I'm reading this wrong. I'm sorry, I'm reading it wrong, I'm reading it wrong. That's the, that's the total amount. I'm sorry. So if you look at just the first year, it'd be fifty-one thousand on the police, a hundred and one thousand, twenty-seven thousand on the schools. Add that up, you know, so you got a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars in the first year. If you look at a hundred percent for all three plans, you're looking at eighty-six, a hundred, a hundred eighty. So, well, somewhat, two, two and a half, probably three hundred thousand dollars. That's just in the first year.
Right, their chart, their chart is projecting out over twenty years.
The five, the five million dollar impact would be over, if you look at all three plans, over the twenty years. So the one, what Milliman puts forth, though, is just granting a cost of living for one year, your impact is spread out over twenty years. Your impact is not just a one-year. We grant the COLA, there's a, there's a, there's a hit to the bottom line for the town next year, and we're done with it.
Yeah.
It's spread, the impact of the COLA is spread out over a twenty-year period. So the impact over twenty years, just for a one-year COLA, is one and a half million for the, for the town, three million for the police, eight hundred thousand for the board of that. And if you give a COLA next year, you can just, you'll see the same thing happening, depending on what the cost of living is.
Right, so ironically, I mean, I understand the, the impact of inflation, it's affecting everybody's decision-making on everything at the moment. But by attempting to ameliorate the impact on these retirees, you're, we would be for certain adding to the budget in an appreciable way every year for the next twenty years.
Correct.
Which affects everybody else. State the very obvious. Mitch, you have handy the actual con, the actual clause of the contract, or maybe Pete?
Yeah.
That, that we're dealing with here.
With the police contract?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Maybe related to this issue, if we see we got exactly what it says.
Read it to you?
Please.
Okay, this is on page forty, under, it's article forty, page forty of the current police contract. It's called Pension Benefit Review, and it refers to the retirement board, which we've always assumed to be the pension committee. Retirement board shall cause a study to be made by the plan actuary, prepare it before to the first selectman, first submission to the board of selectmen every two years, commencing with the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, nineteen eighty-six, on the current status of pension benefits made to all retirees who are previously police employees and the effective economic conditions on the payment over that period. The board of selectmen, after receiving report referred to in the preceding paragraph, shall have the right in its sole and exclusive discretion to make adjustments in the payments being made to former police employees previously retired under this plan. The board of selectmen shall vote on any such proposed adjustment within ninety days from the date of its receipt of the report from the actuary. That's it.
That's. It.
Yes.
We talk about a twenty-year cycle, but many, we talk about all the bargaining units. Many of the bargaining units are no longer, you know, they have 401s now, so.
This is, this is the actuarial report based on our present employees and future employees. The COLA will only affect the current retirees. It will not affect anyone who is not retired yet. So that's their, that's their impact study, if you will, on the, on the current.
I understand that's in the calculation. The question I need to ask, though, is.
Sorry.
What is the potential? I mean, to lose point, you know, inflation is real, and cost of living is real, and that type of thing. What is the potential of the town's contribution to the other bargaining units through the 401 of them requesting a change in the adjustment of the town's contribution? I know they're, each one's negotiated, but.
To the 401.
We make this decision in a policy or whatever for COLA. What's preventing the other bargaining unit saying, well, higher town contribution?
There's nothing to prevent that. It would be subject to negotiations. The 401A is in all of the collective bargaining agreements, as well as in the individual contracts of employees that are not represented by bargaining units. At the current time, everyone has the same parameters of contributing between three and eight.
Well, I just, you know.
So, yes, somebody could, could certainly raise in negotiations, they want to see that increased or decreased. And of course, if it's increased, the town's contribution would also increase if that was agreed to, yes.
Now, to Sandy's point about concerned about if you do one, you gotta do a mall. I mean, technically, could affect it, you know, all bargaining units across the board, whether they're pensions or the 401, because, you know, like you said, the calculation of the existing pensioners is sunset, right? Just by their own aging out, but not necessarily, you know, that goes to my set.
Like I said, that could be discussed in any of the negotiations at any time.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. Anything further? All right, we have a motion on the table. There are no other comments or questions. Let me try your minds. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? Aye.
Aye, I suppose.
Okay, which motion was on the table?
The motion to grant. This was to grant, wasn't it?
Was to grant.
No, it was, it was seconded.
It was seconded for purposes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did they vote again?
Yeah.
Did they vote again?
All right.
Why don't you repeat the motion so everyone's clear?
The motion, the motion is to grant the approval just for the police department?
Yes.
Okay. Is, let me try your minds on it.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Opposed. That motion, that motion does not carry. All right, I think we've satisfactorily dispensed with our contractual obligations.
Should we vote on the across the board or not?
I think, I think you should, because the motion was just, I mean, my personal opinion.
Attorney Barrett's online here.
My, my, you voted just to not allow the police, I think, just to be consistent.
Is there a motion, is there a motion to grant the COLA, grant a COLA for all three bargaining units?
You're putting that in the affirmative. I mean, I would make the opposite motion, which is to not grant a COLA for any bargaining unit this year.
You just made it. And a second.
I will second it with the discussion. Structurally, is there a way to include in this motion a condition to include discussion seeking a resolution to Susan's point about the angst that this is causing on an annual basis? You know, it's unfortunate, and hopefully unnecessary for her. Is there a way to include in, in this motion a condition that this is resolved in future negotiations, one way or the other? You know, it, it seems to me that the wording, we've gotten hung up on the wording, both of the contracts and, and even our motions, I guess. And just clarify, one way or the other, I mean, you know, not that we, we have the ability, but we will grant up to X percentage or something like that, or we'll not, or something to that effect. Is there a way to include that as a condition in the motion?
Well, my thoughts on that is, you're talking about taking a position with regard to future contract negotiations, it seems to me. I mean, we could probably pass a resolution, I suppose, defer to Pete. But, you know, I don't know that we can, we can take a declarative position, we can say, you know, we think it's an idea.
I'm not saying what it is, but just have this, you know, resolved, to Susan's point. I mean, this is, it just, it just seems to me unnecessary if we find a way to resolve it. And my concern is that, you know, some of the negotiations this board probably, you know, may change.
Right.
So if you put something in writing that it's required that in future negotiations of any bargaining units that have this situation, that it's, you know, addressed.
I know, I know what you're trying, I know what you're trying to get to. And I think, you know, if we were to, to decide that we were going to grant an annual COLA, right? In exchange for that, would the, would the police union agree to take out the requirement that we look at theirs every two years? Because I think in some of the documentation that was supplied to us, there are some municipalities that grant, you know, a one percent or two percent every year, right, Mitch?
Right, might, might I suggest at this time, since you're, you're treading on, and this is Peter Barrett, town attorney's on the line, but treading on contract negotiation discussions, which I think are probably more properly discussed in executive session or, or just with the first selectman, when it comes time for negotiations, as opposed to tying the hands of a negotiating team one way or the other in a, in a motion.
Well, okay, there's nothing.
Peter's ain't that, he's downloaded there.
You, you know, I, I would not make the vote conditional on anything. Basically, you know, the, and I know, Charlie, you haven't finished the exact thought and how it would be worded, but basically, you would be saying it's conditioned on the, there being a negotiation that resolves the issue in the future, and it, it kind of steps on what negotiations may or could happen. So I, I would think it's wiser to just do a clean motion, one way or the other. Now, what you, you know, what you can do as a board is, is ask, for instance, have the first selectman send a letter over just asking that this be one of the issues to, to be discussed at further negotiations. That's about as far as I'd go. I would not include it with the, the vote on the COLA.
Okay, we could send a message clearly to, to Mitch as our HR director, you know, our intentions, number one. Let me, a whole new thought process then. Pass what, the motion that's existing at this point passes today. Is there any reason why we, as a board, couldn't have the discussion in grant a COLA for all of those that would be entitled, you know, at any given point, just right off the board? I mean, say, you know, we come out of the budget, you know, we're looking at things, and, you know, we come up with a percentage of, you know, whatever, we, we base it on some other calculation, GDP or whatever, it's some number, and, you know, and just pick it as a percentage going forward, something like that. Is there anything?
There's nothing, nothing preclude us from doing that. The only thing that is, is defined is the police contract, that we have to look at theirs every couple.
That's Susan's point, except that we deal with that today. But I, I do, do think that, you know, to those point, I mean, times are changing, things are expensive now. You know, maybe that's something that we should look at, maybe we can just put it on a future agenda and say, you know, how do we go forward, you know, as pensioners? You know, is that going to open up a can of worms with the 401 people? I don't know. That, that, that's a matching contribution type thing.
Right. You know, some people want to, some people might want to match more, you know, for a hundred percent match, you know.
The match reflects the inflationary trends. The reason for granting COLA, granting COLAs is the fixed pension does not accommodate inflationary trends. So on a 401K, you are effectively making higher contributions each year, that salary increases. So I'm not sure that, it's a great point to raise, I'm not sure that it, it has a substantive effect the way what is being asked for with.
I just always, you know, I think anybody's concerned about unintended consequences, and, you know, I, being in negotiations, anything can pop up, so.
But, well, Charlie, what comes to mind immediately is we put together a subcommittee in this, the pension committee, probably HR and finance.
Or ask the pension committee to do it.
Yeah.
You know, that doesn't make sense historically. I'm, you know, Mitch has already compiled a lot of information about our retirees, and that's all we're concerned with at this point in time. And does the historical situation of our retirees, police, and the other bargaining units merit a, a review at this point in time? You know, has GDP and everything else, but a cost of living, whatever that number they use to calculate, has it changed that substantially in X numbers of years that our pensioners are affected, that it merits consideration?
Well, that's the review you just had. I mean, I don't, I don't know what else you'd ask for, because you, you got such a review from our actuary as to what the impact to GDP or CDI.
Not as to the impact, I'm asking the pension committee, which frankly, just more familiar, one of the micromanagers situation, to, to look at historically, our town employees that would be affected by this. And, you know, has it changed since the last COLA, which is a long time.
So to your point, I think, yes, we can do that. We can charge whoever we want to charge, ourselves or the pension committee, whatever. But I think it includes an exploration of alternatives to what we're doing now, which is just look at it every two years. One of those, one of those alternatives may be granting an annual COLA, because otherwise, if we do it on an ad hoc basis, we're going to be faced with the same decision.
Well, that's what, that's what, to get some, you know, work in some percentage.
Right, which is a good conversation during budget season, honestly. That's where it sort of fits into the scheme of things.
Yeah.
In any given year, it's like, oh, good news, we're down to a small number.
If you do it as some percentage of some number, then it's generally a conversation, a calculation that can be made for budgetary purposes. So I think that would be worthwhile, because Susan's point in the beginning of this discussion, this adversarial discussion isn't doing anybody any good. I would love to see it resolved.
Well, you know, on the other hand, we will be saddling future administrations. If we go the other way, we would be saddling future administrations with an automatic cost of living increase on pensions that were granted.
Yeah, but that's why we have to make a reasonable, you know, it has to be something that's logical.
Well, it, it, yes, it's no boss, but there's a lot of diminishing returns here. They're called mortality tables. If you look at the documentation, you see, you know.
That's what I said about the sunset. I mean, that's why we did the 401, this kind of stuff.
All right, so Charlie, yes, the answer is yes, we will put together something, I'll work with Mitch, Mary Jane, pension committee, to, to, to try to fashion some kind of impact, and I think we need to do it quickly, if we want to consider it for this upcoming budget. You know, so.
I just, not to beat that to death, but did, if for whatever reason we did that in this budget year, we have the option of doing it one time and only one time, to kind of address the sort of aberration that we're kind of in right now, and, and, and gives us another bite at it, and maybe in a context that's a little more.
Well, it would also, you know, if, if we were to come up with a planned system calculation that worked, then Mitch can include that in future contracts, say, you know, this gets replaced by this, and this is.
I don't think, I don't think you're looking to do anything, Luke, that would overturn what you're about to vote on, because otherwise, you're leaving the door open for this year, which I'm not sure is what you want to do also with the upcoming discussion with the labor board. But, you know, I think you want to make a decision.
Yeah, we're not making a condition of.
Just hashing it out, which is helpful to think about.
Okay, anything further? Lewis's motion is in the, is, is to not grant COLA this year, if I'm personally.
Any of the eligible boards, any of the eligible bargaining units.
Correct. Okay, let me try your minds.
Correct. Okay, uh, let me try your minds in favor of that motion.
Aye.
That's you, thank you. All right, um, we're going to have a, a presentation, a discussion on cannabis legislation, uh, next steps towards a decision. But I'll be happy to entertain public forum. Um, at this point, um, if anyone wants to address the board in public forum. Hearing none, uh, discussion on cannabis legislation and next steps towards a decision. I'd like to introduce everyone to Sarah Westby, uh, from Shipman and Goodwin. Uh, Derek, good morning, thank you for your patience, uh, waiting for the conclusion of our, uh, previous agenda items. So, um, as, uh, I don't think I need to, uh, labor this, but you know, we are, uh, in, in the process of trying to determine whether or not we're going to allow, um, the sale, distribution, production, cultivation. It's about fourteen categories, twelve categories, right? Uh, of, of marijuana, uh, which is consistent with the legislative act a while ago. So, uh, what I've asked that Pete and I have worked with Sarah to put together, just to back up framing our decision, okay? Um, this is going along with a couple of other things. We all had the, uh, the benefit of the digital survey, uh, that was put out into the community. Currently, there's another community engagement tool that we're using that we can talk about a little bit later. It's also, uh, with Zen City, it's an engaged, it's called Engage. And I want to thank, uh, Jamie, Tracy and Karen for having put that together. You can get to that on our website. I think we've got to start to promote that a little more heavily, uh, so that we can drive the interest interaction with that, uh, that, that, um, that tool, uh, which can help inform us because it also allows people to make comments, to discuss it. It basically tracks what the decision points are and, and where we are with this. So Sarah, uh, without further delay, um, if you would, wouldn't mind, uh, starting the presentation or discussion that we talked about.
Sure. Thanks Matt, and thanks everyone for having me. Um, I'm Sarah Westby, I'm a lawyer with Shipman and Goodwin, based in our Hartford office. I am a co-chair of the Cannabis Practice and also a member of the Employer Relations and Defense Team. And I, uh, was asked today to present about what types of decisions municipalities have the power to make when it comes to cannabis and what's the state of the law and the cannabis market in Connecticut generally. So I have a PowerPoint that I prepared for the meeting and I'm just going to try to share my screen right now. Okay, can everyone see this presentation?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, great. So just to give a little bit of an overview of what I want to cover today in this slide. Um, so I'm going to start with kind of the 10,000 foot view of cannabis and where it stands, um, from a legal perspective in the United States and then in Connecticut specifically. I'm going to talk a little bit about what the Connecticut Cannabis Act does. And then I'm going to get into what decisions municipalities have the power to make, what limits there are in those decisions, um, considerations for the board of selectmen and then conversely considerations for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit about the various license types and that the board has the ability to prohibit or allow certain license types within the town. Um, it's not, it's not an all or nothing decision, so we'll talk a little bit about that. Um, and then, excuse me, to conclude the discussion, I'll just lay out some of the considerations that you may want to discuss as a board for what decision you ultimately want to make. So just to give a really brief overview, cannabis is still illegal on a federal level. And cannabis is defined by the THC content. It's, it's not any different in terms of the plant itself from hemp. So in the United States hemp is legal on a federal level and that was accomplished through the 2018 Farm Bill. And so you might see hemp in the form of seeds, foods, um, weaving materials, but you also see it in the form of CBD and CBD has become a very popular dietary supplement. Um, CBD, if it's going to be legal on a federal level, has to have 0.3% THC by dry weight or less. And that's really the only distinction for what makes it legal versus cannabis, which is above that point three THC percentage. Um, not to get too into the weeds, but there are many different, um, compounds that can make up the total THC content. There's Delta eight, Delta nine, you may have heard about some of these in the news. Connecticut looks at the total THC content, so all of those components combined to determine what's hemp versus what's cannabis. So because Connecticut, because cannabis is still illegal on a federal level, um, there are certain federal laws that come into play and make it risky for businesses to be involved in this space. Um, there, now there are certain federal memos that have been generated, uh, going back to 2011 that say, we're really not going to prosecute cannabis unless it's, you know, being sold to children, unless it's adulterated, um, unless it's tied to violent crimes, things like that. So the federal government, uh, while it still considers cannabis to be illegal, has adopted this policy of really just looking the other way, particularly where the states regulate cannabis use and have a scheme for legal sales and use of cannabis. Um, so, you know, some of the laws that come into play on the federal level are the Bank Secrecy Act, uh, Controlled Substances Act and RICO, um, and, and these things make it very difficult for financial institutions to be involved in the industry. Um, but in terms of the Connecticut market, because Connecticut has legalized cannabis, these federal laws don't come into play too much, other than in the, the banking and insurance sector, um, so long as your operation is exclusively within the state. So, you know, if you're going to sell cannabis in the state of Connecticut, you can't get it from Massachusetts. It has to be grown, processed, manufactured, all within the state of Connecticut. So the law that legalized cannabis possession and use for adults age 21 and older in Connecticut was adopted in, uh, June of 2021 and effective July 1, 2021. Um, the law is called the Responsible and Equitable Regulation of Adult Use Cannabis Act. Uh, I just call it Cannabis Act for short. So in addition to decriminalizing possession by adults age 21 and over and providing for the erasure of certain cannabis related criminal convictions, the law also established a framework for legal cultivation and sales of cannabis in the state. And no one can sell or grow cannabis legally until they receive a license from the Department of Consumer Protection. And so in conjunction with this statute, the, uh, the legislature formed, um, a body called the Social Equity Council, which operates out of DECP, DECD, um, Department of Economic and Community Development. And the Social Equity Council is responsible for trying to create incentives and create a structure that prioritizes licenses for people who have grown up in or currently live in disproportionately impacted areas of the state. And that disproportionate impact refers to disproportionate impact of cannabis prohibition or the war on drugs, which are primarily black and brown communities, but are defined by their unemployment rates and, um, income levels. So those areas are, you know, the ones you would commonly think of Hartford, Waterbury, parts of Stanford, Bridgeport, parts of New Haven and some of the towns in the state. Um, so the licensing process that was developed by the Department of Consumer Protection through the legislation gives people who grew up in those communities and who are below a certain income threshold priority in terms of licensing and also access to funding. But because this is such an expensive industry, what we've been seeing is that larger businesses who may operate in other states or who are currently producing or selling medical marijuana in the state have tried to team up with those social equity individuals to get this license priority and to get the benefits of being a social equity applicant. So the law does all of these things. Um, it also includes some more stringent provisions about smoking in the workplace and in indoor facilities. Um, and it reinforces protections for the use of medical marijuana. Does anyone have any questions so far?
I think we're good, Sarah.
Okay. Just feel free to interrupt if you have any questions about any of this. Um, so I want to talk a little bit about the various license types within the state structure. Um, so there were a lot of numbers thrown out, you know, 14, 12. Um, most people just think of growing and selling, so two, two different categories. There's actually about eight or nine within the state of Connecticut. Um, and so we'll start with the growing, which is the most expensive, the most complex and the most potentially lucrative. So there are two types of licenses that allow you to grow cannabis. And I'm going to get into a little bit about what each one allows you to do in the next couple of slides. But just for an overview, uh, there's a cultivator license and a micro cultivator license. And those are differentiated by how much square footage of grow space you can have for your operation. Um, just a little, you know, a little side note on grow space. Most people who are starting up a cultivation facility, uh, first of all, they all have to be indoors. The law does not allow any outdoor growth at this point. So we're talking about, you know, warehouse facilities generally. And ordinarily, you need about, um, two to one space in terms of manufacturing production to grow space. So if you want to have 10,000 square feet of grow space, you probably need about a 20,000 square foot facility. Um, so that's cultivator and micro cultivator. Then on the manufacturing side, there's product manufacturers, which manufacture things like vape cartridges, pre-rolled joints, um, you know, equipment, that type of thing. Um, and then food and beverage manufacturers, which are only manufacturing products that have cannabis infused into the food or the beverage. So seltzers, gummies, other types of edibles. Um, and then packager, which is pretty self-explanatory. They're taking the finished products and putting them into, um, packaging that is compliant with the DCP regulations on labeling and packaging. On the sales side, there's retailers and hybrid retailers. We also have existing medical only dispensaries in the state right now. Most of them are probably going to convert into a hybrid retailer, which is someone who is allowed to sell both medical and recreational cannabis. Whereas retailers are only permitted to sell recreation cannabis.
I, I actually have a question on this sales point.
Sure.
Sure. What, what indications are there, what data, maybe more to the point? Are there that legal sales, um, supersede illegal, uh, distribution?
In the state of Connecticut?
Well, I, I don't have a lot of data here yet, but on other places. And one of the projections here is that, will that squeeze out the illegal sort of distribution of, of, of marijuana on the street?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think that's the hope. Um, so, and, and I think that that's borne out in states where there is, that where there has been a legal market for several years. Now, I will say that with the current situation that, that some of the other more mature markets are seeing, like Colorado and Oregon, there are many, many people who are licensed to grow. And so the supply is huge and it's exceeding the demand and so the prices are dropping. Um, and that can create a risk of an illegal market when, when everyone's seeing their margins drop significantly. But I think what those states have seen, and, and I don't have any, you know, numbers to quote for you, but I think what those states have seen generally is that the legal, the, the illegal market really recedes into the shadows and the primary market is this legal market. And I think, you know, I think that's been the case Southwest, I think that's been the case in Massachusetts. Um, it's hard to say the extent to which people are, you know, going across the border to Massachusetts if they're from Connecticut and, you know, whether that factors in, um, to the illegal market. But if you're talking about, you know, cartel activity, um, and that type of thing, I think the data is, is pretty good that legalizing cannabis will reduce that illegal activity.
And, and this is maybe a step away from an actual tangent, but I'm sort of concerned with the concept of legalizing, uh, marijuana will give people the impression that it's okay to just use it anywhere. Like what's the corresponding management of use, uh, that, that needs to happen to, to sort of prevent people from smoking while they're driving, which if anybody who hasn't experienced that smell from the cars in front of them is not paying attention. And, um, and on the streets and in, in, in public places. I mean, that is a genuine concern for me that this sort of takes the, um, the, the sort of the, 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 opens up Pandora's box, not the mixed metaphors. But I mean, you know, what's the corresponding management piece? And maybe that's going to come later in your presentation and sorry for jumping ahead, but that, that worries me.
Yeah, so there, there's a couple of things there that we can talk about and, and I will address those in the presentation. But, you know, you as a town have a lot of authority about where you allow and where you prohibit the use of cannabis. And if we're talking about smoking in particular, the Cannabis Act actually tightened a lot of the restrictions about smoking um, and, and made it, you know, um, illegal to smoke, you know, inside any buildings. You can prohibit it in any town buildings, on any town property, including parks, uh, sidewalks, that type of thing. The, the only requirement is that for towns of 50,000 or more, which, you know, you, you wouldn't fall into, you have to designate at least one location where cannabis consumption is allowed. But there are some really robust protections for smoking in the law in particular. And, and obviously you can't smoke while you're driving, you know, it's regulated very similarly to alcohol.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Yeah.
Have there?
Go ahead, Charles.
Uh, I, I've heard in the past that the struggles with law enforcement as far as, uh, impairment, that they don't necessarily have levels for measurement at this point in time or easy, you know, with, with alcohol, it's fairly straightforward test fairly quickly, uh, to test for impairment. Is that just as easy with marijuana?
You mean, is there a risk that the police won't be able to detect impairment like they can for alcohol?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think there, you know, there are certainly field sobriety tests you can do for cannabis impairment and there are certain signs like, you know, bloodshot eyes, slurred words, you know, kind of.
And those aren't legal reasons for impairment.
Right, so, so very similar to alcohol, there, there are specific articulable symptoms that will give the police cause, um, you know, to test and to arrest on the spot. The problem with cannabis testing is that it detects presence and not impairment. Whereas, you know, the, the alcohol tests that we have are much better at detecting impairment. Um, and with, you know, cannabis, just like any other substance, a certain level is going to affect one person much differently than it will another person. Um, I think the risk is more if you're the person who uses it because it can show up on a test, you know, days or even weeks after use, when you may not be impaired at all. But I think those same field sobriety tests that are fairly effective for detecting alcohol use will translate to cannabis use.
And that, and that challenge with detection in law enforcement exists today because it is legal throughout the state of Connecticut, regardless of whether it's legal here. So that's a challenge for law enforcement in general, not, not as a result, it might be exacerbated potentially as a result of any decisions we make.
Correct. And, and of course, it's, it's always important to keep in mind that it's only legal for adults age 21 and up. Um, you know, so it's not legal for high schoolers or anyone who's under 21.
Great.
Um, I think, so I think the only license categories left are delivery and transportation services and those are the people who are bringing cannabis either directly to the consumers or between the various businesses. So just.
Sarah, that brings up a good point. You said, yeah, delivery to the consumers, does that, you know, allow, uh, DoorDash or, uh, or somebody to, to distribute it that way?
Yes, yeah, kind of like an Uber for cannabis, Uber Eats or Uber, uh, yeah, DoorDash, something like that. Yeah, but you have to be licensed to do that. It's not like anyone who drives an Uber can just start bringing cannabis. Yeah, but you have to be licensed to do that, it's not like anyone who drives an Uber can just start bringing cannabis.
And whose responsibility is it at that point to ensure that the? The purchaser is twenty-one or over?
Well, that would be on whoever is selling it to them, so if they're buying it from a retail store and the retail store is contracting out a delivery service. That would happen at the point of sale.
Is that, is that allowed with alcohol today?
Alcohol delivery?
Yes.
You know, I, I'm not sure, I, I know it used to be.
That's a delivery source.
Oh, yeah, but, but like within, like from local liquor stores within the state, I'm not sure, and yeah, you can obviously have things delivered to you.
And, and when you talked about retail sales. The discussion has come up that there is no longer any limit of the number in a community.
The limit on what now?
Retail sales sites.
Within a specific town?
Yes, in any community, is there a limit of number of sites or licenses available?
No, there is not, but the zoning commission or the board of selectmen can impose the America limits. And there are limits on the number of licenses that the state is awarding, so Connecticut is a limited license jurisdiction. So there are only, there were, I believe. Ten retail and ten hybrid retail licenses awarded through the lottery process. And then the existing medical producers were allowed to open a certain number of retail establishments to serve their facilities as well.
What is the potential of? And you define, you know, whether. I, I don't know how to describe it, but I guess with that, was it point zero three? If it's below that, it, you know, it doesn't come under some of these regulations, if it's above it, it comes under these regulations. But what is to prevent? Potentially each convenience store. I, I don't know, at that point, are they called hemp or I don't even know what they're called, but cookies and gummy bears and stuff like that.
So if they're infusing the, the CBD, which is point three percent THC or lower into food products. Retailers could sell those in theory without violating the cannabis act. There are, you know, FDA considerations there, but that's kind of a whole other ball of wax. But you can't infuse cannabis into those type of products without a license and you can't sell them without a license. So if anyone was doing that, they'd be in violation of the law. Now CBD has such a low percentage of THC. That it really doesn't impair people in any way, I mean, that, that's the determination that the government has made in setting that limit.
What if you have ten cookies?
At point three percent, you know. I, I still don't think that there's, there's really any evidence to suggest that people will get high off that. You know, I think, I think that at that point, it's, you know, it's on the user. And I'm, I, you know, Connecticut has its own regulations for hemp and CBD, but they're much less stringent.
Can I ask a question that goes back to the previous question about the number of retail establishments? In, in the original law, I think the rule was up to, a population up to twenty-five thousand could only have one. And I understand that that's changed, can you tell us how that changed?
Yep, it was an amendment to the statute that just removed that population-based restriction.
So it was an amendment, now I'm really ignorant, that means it's voted on by the legislature, just like the original.
Right, right. Yeah, and it, you know, it was kind of quietly done, there wasn't much fanfare.
Yeah, surprising. You wouldn't happen to know a citation or anything, so I could look that up. I, I've tried Googling it without success.
I can send you the amendments.
Yeah, I mean, that to me, that made a big difference finding out about that.
But on that note, towns can. Towns could say we can have one or a hundred, I mean. Yeah.
That's right, you have that authority, and you can, you can say none at all, you can say. One retail, one micro cultivator, two retail, one micro cultivator, that's all within your power.
Okay, okay, we don't have to just go by miles away from things.
We can, we can, we can craft.
We could just say just one, so it puts us back in this, I mean, it's.
Into zoning for sure.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Someone else asked me that, they said, so you pass it, I said, oh, but we will just pass the ability to have. The ability to sell or grow, I said, it will be many other steps then going forward to, to reality.
We, we have the ability to craft pretty much what we want through ordinance.
Right.
I think you heard me suggest that. That social public policy may not necessarily be best when it evolves or comes from zoning. In terms of policy, that might be elected officials per view, implement with preferences. But implementation is largely the responsibility of planning zoning, although we have the ability. To craft an ordinance as tightly or as loosely as we would like. Thanks, Sarah.
Sure, so just one, one other note about license types. If, if you wanted to have a testing facility or laboratory within the town. Those are not regulated in the same way as the growing and manufacturing and sales licenses are. So because those facilities are not transacting in cannabis. They are not subject to this licensing structure, although they are subject to other DCP license requirements. And so if you wanted to have five testing labs within the town, that, you know, that wouldn't be constrained by the cannabis law. And you, and you could treat those differently.
And Sarah, can I, can we just clarify the term testing? That is testing of product to determine THC levels or testing of blood samples from people who are pulled over. But which of the two?
Right, right, either, either or, I was, I had in mind more like testing of the cannabis product for THC levels and other contaminants. But yes, either one. Yeah, that, that's a separate licensing scheme to, to operate one of those facilities. So just to go into a little bit more detail about what each license type allows you to do. So cultivators have to have a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet of gross space. Now that roughly translates to at least a thirty thousand square foot facility. Most of the larger cultivators are looking for something that's in the range of seventy-five to a hundred. Because there is no outer limit on the amount of cultivation space under this license, but it does all have to be indoors. Cultivators.
Logic of requiring indoors, I mean, I would think environmentally that would be so. Anti-green.
Or we keep, keeps people from going up.
Yeah, there's security.
It's got to be air conditioned, it's got to be lit, it's got to be this, I mean, talk about environmental impact.
Also, the other piece of that is the effectiveness of growing outside in the northeast. Limits you to one crop a year, whereas when they grow in the inside locations, it's multiple. Multiple harvests.
Just seems so contradictory, I mean, I can appreciate the security, I can appreciate, you know, the struggles of farming, any farming. But I mean. Well, let's be green and build more air-conditioned fifteen, twenty thousand square foot building. You know?
Yeah, so I, I think it was the, the security, the supply, you know.
Money, I mean, that's what's.
Yeah, there's certainly.
Produced in a controlled environment, so heck with the green environment.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's certainly pros and cons both ways, but up in the northeast, I think the, the indoor grows are predominant. Micro cultivators can have between two and ten thousand square feet of gross space. So again, you know, they're looking at much smaller facilities, but about double that in, in terms of total square footage. They can add up to five thousand square feet per year. Sorry?
That's about a quarter acre, that, that feels, that feels like a lot for a micro grower.
Yeah, they, they, you know, I don't have exact numbers on the yield, but the, the yield is fairly small for.
Okay.
Square footage. They can expand up to twenty-five thousand feet, and at that point, they have the option to convert their license. But of course, they have to have the space to be able to do that.
Classic, classic.
So cultivators and micro cultivators can also process and manufacture the products in-house. They can choose to send that to outside production facilities, but they can also do that in-house. The one thing they can't do is deliver their product directly to consumers or sell it directly to consumers. They have to use a retail facility or a delivery service for that. I think we talked a little bit about retailers and hybrid retailers. If you have a hybrid retailer that's selling medical cannabis, you have to have a licensed pharmacist on site at all hours of operation. And there are some requirements about keeping the medical cannabis sales tracked and stored differently from. The recreational cannabis. Oh, so one other thing to note, Guilford won't really be dealing with cultivators in the town. Because cultivators right now can only be located in the disproportionately affected areas of the state, and that's by statute. So those, I think there are. Nine or so who have received provisional licenses and may be able to get up and running in the next year. And then the four existing medical producers, but tho- those new nine cultivators. That are likely going to receive licenses have to be located in the disproportionately affected areas. So you won't have people who have cultivator licenses looking to locate Guilford.
That does not apply to micro?
Correct, does not apply to micro, so you, you may have micro cultivators who want to locate Guilford.
Disproportionately affected areas. Get better opportunities for this type of thing.
Right, and the idea that those communities.
Am I missing something here?
Yeah, so the idea is that those.
That's struggling because of whatever other issue, let's put more of this stuff in that area.
To make up for inequities from the, where the war on drugs was.
For the economics, for the economics of it.
For the census that came down, you know, people got twenty years.
The economic benefits, I understand why they're disproportionately.
It's reparations for people who were jailed for.
So let's, let's build more of this type of thing.
You may not agree with it, but honestly, that's part of the reasoning.
It's making up for the damage that was done.
Yes.
By giving.
By, by giving them an opportunity.
On the, on the legal side. Your, your irony is, is not lost, I mean, it's a point you're making, but frankly, if, if this had happened sixty years ago, which it could have. We wouldn't be outraged by this, you know, the fact that it's been slotted in this, this illegal gray zone for all these decades.
These communities are struggling, so let's put more liquor stores in, is that where we're going?
That, what they're saying is, that goes back to my original question, and I don't want to debate with the legislator how to wrestle with it. But my original question was, does this legal activity supplant the illegal activity? And if it becomes a legal money-making proposition that is respectable, for lack of a better word, that may be an advantage in the long run. But you make the good point that they have more availability in the top area where this is already potentially a problem, could exacerbate the underlying problems, but.
But it's not retail, it's just cultivation.
That's cultivation, yeah. Okay. This was giving a class of individuals. An opportunity to become entrepreneurs, all right, but as Sarah mentioned earlier. The, you know, the irony is the folks that were most, who are most adversely impacted. Are not necessarily in a position economically to do this, so they, so here's what, what happens is we find people who have. Economic resources and it's just, and, and are, are, are co-opting those individuals. So it'll be, there'll be a few people who make out quite well on this.
And then the town itself has the opportunity to get a substantial amount of tax revenue from these establishments as well. And the idea is that that goes back into the community.
Sarah, is that three percent?
Yes.
Town doesn't get three percent, that's the total.
Sarah, could you explain how the town?
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to get into the, the taxes a little bit.
Okay, all right.
But I, I mean, essentially, it's a three percent tax in the total sales that goes to the town. That's in addition to the six point two five percent sales tax. And then there's also a separate THC tax. Now, there's not a lot of guidance for the town on how you collect that tax and, you know, where you have to, what you have to do with it and that kind of thing. But I think that, I think that the way it works is that it's collected at the point of sale. It goes into kind of a trust that's held by DCP and available to the municipalities. But there's, there's a lot that's still to be worked out on the tax front.
That's the collect. From the retailer, yeah.
Right, and, and that's, yeah, that's for retailers. Right. I'm not entirely sure how the cultivator tax works, but, you know, there's, there's. Sorry, what was that?
I just did an example, it would be thirty thousand dollars of tax on a million dollars worth of sales. If I did it right.
Right. So. Just a little bit more detail on the manufacturer, packager and delivery licenses here, we talked a little bit about those. Those businesses are receiving the cannabis plant from the growers. They're turning it into either an edible, a drink, or some type of other cannabis product, like a pre-rolled joint or a vape cartridge. And then sending that over to the retailers for sale or delivery services. Then the primary difference between the delivery service and the transporter is that. The transporters deliver from business to business, whereas the delivery services go direct to the consumers.
Any of these limited to where they can be, such as the cultivation was limited to. Disadvantaged areas, are any of these limited to where they can be, or can they be in any town?
They can be anywhere, anywhere that the town will permit, so the only license that's limited to the.
So it could be cultivated in a disadvantaged area, but then shipped to. An area such as our town for processing.
That's true, correct, and then there's also the four existing medical cannabis producers. Who can now grow both medical and adult use. And they're not necessarily restricted to those areas, but all the new cultivators are.
Difference between the cultivation of. Regular marijuana and medical marijuana.
So medical is allowed to have a higher percentage of THC and it's just more tightly regulated. So it has to be segregated and has to be dispensed by a licensed pharmacist. So it can't, you know, in terms of growing.
But if the licensed medical marijuana. Okay, so they're measuring if, I just.
So here's a quick overview of the license application process. DCP opened the license application process in February of this year and it ran for about three months. And then everyone who applied in that licensing round. Was put into a lottery and there was a separate social equity lottery and then a general lottery. And DCP drew the applications from each lottery in a set amount of licenses for each type. So an application would be drawn, DCP would decide whether the applicant met the criteria. And then if they did and they paid a provisional license fee, they would be awarded a provisional license. Once you have a provisional license, you have fourteen months to get your business off the ground. And complete a number of steps that are prescribed by DCP in order to get a final license. And no one can operate a cannabis establishment in the state without a final license. And no one can operate a cannabis establishment in the state without a final license. So anyone who holds a provisional license can't start selling, they can't start growing, they have to get that final license. And in order to get the final license, some of the things that they need to do are have a contract with the state's seed to sale tracking system for security. They have to show a right to occupy the space, um so a contract for sale or a lease. They have to have a site plan, a security plan, and they have to have zoning approval. Um and so many towns, when they are looking to determine whether they're going to grant a permit for the applicant who's a cannabis establishment who's looking to locate in the town, they'll ask for proof that they have a provisional license at least. Any questions on that? So where are we with that process in Connecticut? Um like I said, we've had the first round of licensing, DCP has drawn a number of applications. They've issued a number of provisional licenses and they, they're still drawing some applications um in the categories of uh delivery and food and beverage manufacturing. Um there, there's in my notes here, I have, they've issued nine provisional licenses to cultivators, and those again are restricted to the DIAs. Um they've issued ten provisional licenses for retailers, which is the maximum allow, uh maximum amount allowed. Two for micro cultivators, uh sorry, four for micro cultivators. Um and then there's equity joint ventures, which can be in any license type except cultivation. And an equity joint venture is a partnership between one of the companies who is licensed to either grow or sell medical cannabis in the state and a social equity applicant. Um so being a medical producer or retailer in the state of Connecticut before Connecticut legalized adult-use cannabis is a huge advantage, and the law clearly gave a nod um to, to those operators because it allowed them to create up to two additional businesses in any license type except for cultivation. Um just based on the fact that they had an existing medical license. So based on the fact that um some businesses that were already operating in the state had a leg up in terms of creating these equity joint ventures and getting their business off the ground. Um they will likely begin adult-use sales in early twenty twenty-three. And I think that's likely the earliest we're gonna see, and it's maybe possible that some might have been able to start this month. Uh but most likely, it's gonna be early twenty twenty-three, and then the new, the new businesses will follow um as uh as the year progresses. So now I want to talk a little bit about the decisions that the board has the power to make. Um so there's a couple of different ways a municipality can choose to allow or prohibit cannabis establishments. Um you can hold a referendum upon a vote of ten percent of the electors and put it on the ballot in the next regular election. Um or you can enact an ordinance. Or you can do it through zoning regulations, so there's, there's three ways that you can make that yay or nay decision. Um and I believe that the town initially imposed a moratorium by ordinance. Um and that that is expiring relatively soon. So in addition to deciding whether you want to allow or prohibit cannabis establishments altogether, you can also decide to allow certain types but not others, so only micro cultivation or only production or something like that.
Does the referendum need to take place at the time of an election of elected officials, or could that be at the time of our budget referendum?
So the statute says any, any regular election. So I, I, it would need to be where you're electing officials.
Okay.
We could put an advisory question on it. A non-binding advisory question probably, right? That's a, that's, that's a question for Pete.
Yeah, so the statute says it has to be um any regular election as defined in general statutes nine dash one, so I could look that up pretty easily.
Thank you.
So this is just the statutory language that allows a municipality authority to make that decision. And then in addition, you can also restrict hours of operation signage, just like with any liquor store. Um you can establish restrictions on proximity to certain other businesses, you know, such as schools, libraries, charitable institutions, public parks, et cetera. Um and you can also restrict the proximity between cannabis establishments, and and many towns have done that under zoning regulations. For example, um you can't, one cannabis establishment cannot locate within a thousand feet of another cannabis establishment.
Sarah, I'm, I'm curious if you happen to know the rationale for allowing individual municipalities who uh determine the hours of operation for, for retail as opposed to the state liquor commission, which has uh, you know, has, has the authority to determine when.
Um I, I would imagine it's because the decision whether to allow those establishments in the first place is done on a municipality level. Um but that's, that's just an educated guess.
Okay.
Yeah, the um, the regu- the cannabis regulations don't get into that. Um so in addition to the list of establishments from general statutes thirty dash forty-six, which relates to liquor, you can also expand that list to include things like parks and libraries and daycare facilities and things like that.
Sarah, a lot of these restrictions seem to imply that these would be establishments that their sole purpose would be to market these things. What, what's the situation, you know, for instance, a convenience store that apply to sell these products? And they're open, you know, they're open twenty-four seven, and obviously, if we were to restrict the times and things like that, uh.
So, so these products can. Yeah, these cannabis products can't be sold in any convenience store, they would, they would have to specifically apply for a license, so.
So if they apply for a license.
Yeah.
Then they would have to abide by times and locations and things like that.
Right, so they would be considered a cannabis establishment and subject to any of the zoning restrictions as well as all the legal and regulatory requirements of a cannabis.
So they couldn't sell cannabis, sometimes they, either they, they are an establishment or not, there can't be a can't be both.
That's correct, and you know, as a business proposition, I don't know that it would make sense to make that only a small part of your business because there are so many regulatory hoops. Um but if they were.
These establishments would be sole purpose. You know, not unlike the medical situation now.
Right, right.
That's an important point, that's good.
Right, yeah, and I think that's a, a pretty common misconception that the, that these products will just be available everywhere.
I know in Massachusetts, you know.
Yeah.
Go to the local Wawa. That's what it is.
Yeah.
Personal experience?
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, yeah.
No, understood. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I think the legislature is very cognizant about that and, and keeping these products limited to adult establishments where, you know, only adults can enter, and you know, there, there's a lot of restrictions around signage and marketing and advertising. Um one thing to note, and this is more of a zoning consideration, but the law requires a special permit for approval of retailers and micro cultivators. Um but not necessarily the other establishments.
Both sides of retailers, that. When you hear about these super liquor stores, are you, do you think that that's a direction this might go?
So I know that there's one, there's one establishment that's planned for Hartford, and they're gonna have their zoning and their retail combined in one. And, and the idea of the retail facility is that you can go in and kind of see the cultivation operation at the same time. Um there are not square footage limits on the retail facilities that I'm aware of. Um so you know, it would be just a, a determination based on whatever space the business owner can get and, you know, whether they're buying it.
So as long as a business wasn't cultivating in our community, that they, they could have a cannabis superstore.
They could, but of course, you know, subject to zoning approval. And a lot of towns have limited the, where these facilities can go to certain zones. Um obviously, not in residential zones. Some have allowed them in downtown areas, but you know, many want them kind of in the, in the commercial and industrial areas.
I can see the Costco of cannabis.
Costco of cannabis? Well, the difference is the volume, size is a little bit different than the, you know. Yeah, I know. The inventory is a lot smaller.
Yeah. Is it, if you want, you want to be a regional cannabis distributor?
I think you can only grow and sell in the same state, is that correct, Sarah?
Yeah, yeah, there's no multi-state distribution at this time, yeah. Um and you know, until we see legalization on a federal level, I think that's going to be the case.
Are there gonna be any limitations to uh quantities that can be purchased? In other words, are there gonna be, is it gonna be cultivators, wholesalers, retailers, or is it gonna be cultivators, retailers, any amount?
So are there, so there are limits on what a consumer can purchase at any given time. I don't believe there are limits on how much a retailer can buy from a cultivator, for example. But you know.
What are the limitations of what a consumer can purchase at any time?
So, um off the top of my head, I think that it's something, I think it's, it depends on the, the milligram amounts for each product. So if it's an edible, only up to a certain amount of milligrams of the product, if it's a, a pre-rolled joint.
They buy an, an edible, a, what, what are the other descriptions? Can they buy?
Joint, they.
Multiple products, or is it total purchase?
I think there are overall limits, and, and, and the way that that limit is determined for each product is different. But there, yeah, I, I think there is a total aggregate amount, um and I can look that up for you if you want.
Along those lines, and I'm, I'm just trying to think about the logistics of sort of personal property taxes, inventories. Do the retail stores have restrictions on the amount of inventory they can have on hand, or is it just whatever works for their business?
I'm not sure about that, um again, I can, I can look that up for you, but I'm not sure offhand.
And the taxes and something like that, or municipal taxes aren't gonna be, you know, like what they did to the car dealers, and you're gonna have to send the taxes to our.
So I think that the, the way it works is that the taxes are collected at the point of sale, and they're, they're held by the state, um but, but for use by the municipality.
Okay, so I, I don't know, I'm sure I understood that.
But that's the tax that they, that's not property tax.
No.
Right.
And inventory is not.
No, no, not, not, no, I'm, no, I'm, I'm just talking about the point of sale.
Equipment that they have in there.
Except for the retailer.
Well, I'm thinking of what they did with car dealers, where they all of the lot, the cars on the lot. Ended up selling, or, or to boats, I mean, it all gets sent to Hartford, which is, it used to be the municipality. They did, that's where all the dealers went. And I, I'm asking the same thing about this, I mean, if they're cultivating tons of it in one place, and they can or cannot sell it there, so they gotta ship to someplace that can distribute, get it up to the consumer, is that going to be taxed by the state or by the town?
You mean the inventory? So the only taxes that I'm aware of are the state sales tax, the local municipal tax, and the THC tax, and I believe those all happen at the point of sale when the consumer buys it.
Yeah, I guess it's the TPH stack or whatever, the, the last, that three percent tax, where is that paid to the state or to the municipality?
So let me see if, I think I've got this.
She said it was held in trust and municipalities have to.
Then bill for it.
Request, have requested, right.
Yeah, it's right, it's held in trust. Yeah, so there's, there's not. There's not much guidance on how this tax works, and I have heard from other town uh for selectmen and mayors that that's a point of frustration, they don't really know how this is gonna work. Um but what.
The case, then you know it's going to the state. I mean, that's, you know, that's hard to figure out.
It's an intriguing question that I really would like.
I mean, they can just say it's ours, we can't do anything.
Sure, but it sounds like, it sounds like if I'm understanding the process to get to this. There's been some effort to kind of make sure that the municipalities participate in this. Now, whether that holds true, given the track record with the state and the towns.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's the same old thing, it's, it's a unfunded mandate, we're going to be doing their work for them again.
Hopefully not, no. If, if the money is collected and held in trust, it, I'm not sure it's any different than the receipts we're getting for the nip bottles.
Right.
Because that, that's very similar to what was done here. Uh that is a special tax that was imposed on the nips that goes to the municipalities, and we've received two or three payments, uh they just, they just tell them, come collect your money.
If that was, that's true, that's great, I just, you know, concerned that, you know.
Don't forget.
Well, if they don't forget, is that they'll have it, and then we gotta go bank for it, I mean, look at how much money it go for sends our, compared to how much it gets back, I mean, that's, that's the calculation, rest of it's entertainment.
Yeah, and because no one's up and running yet, I don't think we have an example of how this is working. Um but in the next few months, that may change.
Is there an example, excuse me, is there an example in Massachusetts? Because I'm assuming that maybe it's not true, but I'm assuming towns in Massachusetts are supposedly getting a cut.
Yeah, Massachusetts does things a little bit differently, they require a host community agreement, so there's an agreement between the establishment and the town specifically, and the taxes may be provided for in that, but I'm, I'm not sure how the taxes work in mass. So wanted to give a couple examples from other towns in terms of what they've done for zoning restrictions. Um I know this may be a little bit uh straying into the, the zoning field, but just so you have an example. And, and again, you can do this either by ordinance or by zoning regulations in Guilford. Um so these regulations are from East Hartford, they require a minimum distance of five hundred feet for a cannabis establishment to be from any um public school, house of worship, charitable institution, library, public playground, town park, et cetera. Um and then also uh an outer limit of two hundred feet from any residential zoning district.
And in town only allow these establishments in certain areas versus in other words, can we specify specific areas where they could be, you can't really do that though.
Could do it by proximity and then the zone, and by putting those things together, you could basically kind of create, create the space where they would be able to be permitted.
For, for an exercise, we put together a half a mile radius, maybe within half a mile radius. For for an exercise, we put together a half a mile radius, maybe within half a mile radius, not based over schools. And that basically said, you can put it on the west end of Route One or the east end.
Just thinking back when we had the struggles. I know that. Nobody fought it because nobody wanted one bad enough, but I I do remember that. If they wanted it, the laws. I mean, it's just nobody wanted it that bad. I mean, if there was somebody that really wanted one. My understanding that our laws were not effective at that point, I assume our rewrite is gonna be better.
Well, we have adult oriented facilities. I mean, I could, I could look at proximity on that, and I know that, I think that's only in industrials.
Yeah, we tried to put it to something, but I I do remember when the discussion was being at twenty years ago at this point. You know, we were advised. But it not be quoted that, you know, if somebody really wanted it.
Speaking, speaking as one who who fought that in federal court, yes, that's correct. It's a lot, it's allowable retail, different than this, it's allowable retail use.
Oh, I see.
Well, you never have. All you need, I mean, because proximity highway and the traffic. Traffic counts now.
First Amendment case before the Supreme Court today, so all this stuff ties together.
Pop liquor stores that are getting what up now by corporations are all gonna be little package stores in the future.
As long, as long as their lobby holds up the way they have, they're still, still a pretty.
So this is just another example of some larger distance restrictions, and these are from Norwalk. Um, so they, they um required a mile between uh between cannabis establishments. Um, so in addition to distance from other types of businesses or public facilities, um, you can also. Restrict distance between establishments, um, and that's, you know, kind of another more subtle way of restricting the number, but um. Also, you know, making sure that there, um, you know, there isn't too much congestion or what have you.
Sarah, I've noticed the sort of, I don't know if it's interchangeable, but just so you could clarify for me. Are are people calling um medical, current medical marijuana establishments dispensaries now? And and what is the difference between dispensary and retailer?
Yep, so a dispensary is, it can either be uh purely medical or a hybrid. But a retailer that is not selling medical marijuana cannot call itself a dispensary, that's actually in the regulations, so. They want that term reserved for people who have medical cards to know that they can go there.
Thank you.
So what is it, a medical card? You don't have to have a prescription for medical, but you have to have. It or something?
The medical card is kind of similar to a prescription, so you have to have a licensed physician or healthcare provider. Um, say that you have a condition for which medical marijuana is um an approved treatment.
Limitations of quantity for that permit holder?
I believe so. I I believe there is similar to a prescription.
What prevents them from going to retailer to retailer?
Well, there's nothing really, I mean, they can, you know, once it's legal for adult use, which it is now, and once we have approved sellers, they can. They can do that um subject to the limits they have at a particular store. Um, so as we mentioned, the May amendments to the Cannabis Act removed the numerical limits. By population, but municipalities can still choose to limit the number of establishments. So just a couple of limits on the restrictions that you can put in place. Um, as I mentioned before, this doesn't apply to Guilford, but for larger towns and cities, they have to designate. A public area where cannabis consumption is allowed. Um, you cannot prohibit delivery to a cannabis consumer, even if you do decide to prohibit. Any cannabis establishments from being located within the town, you still have to allow delivery. Um, and in terms of smoking, you can, um, the the Cannabis Act actually expanded. Protections against being exposed to smoke, and that applies to both tobacco and cannabis. So within any building, twenty-five feet of any door, window, or intake vent. Smoking is prohibited, and you can also choose to prohibit smoking. Or e-cigarette use of either tobacco or cannabis on town property, um, outdoor and outdoor areas of restaurants. So this is just a quick summary of the town's decision-making powers. Um, you do have a lot of flexibility in terms of what to allow and prohibit, and how you, those businesses. Um, can operate and where they can be located. I wanted to just talk a little bit about some of the marketing and advertising restrictions that are imposed by regulations. And those are things that every business will be subject to regardless of whatever, you know, decisions the town makes. Um, so. No advertisement can depict someone who's twenty-one, who's under twenty-one. Um, or use any marketing techniques that are targeted towards individuals under twenty-one. The packaging for cannabis products has to be very neutral, uh, has to be white background, black text. No pictures, you can't have any pictures of cannabis leaves or cartoon characters or anything like that. Um, that could be appealing or attractive to young people. Um, marketing materials can't make any health-related claims, i.e. that the product can treat, cure, or prevent a medical condition. Um, unless it's approved by a pharmacist. You can't advertise cannabis products, including paraphernalia, within five hundred feet of a school, daycare, playground, park, or library. Um, again, you can't call a retailer or dispensary, that's only if the. Um, facility is approved for medical cannabis. Um, you can't advertise cannabis products on public vehicles like buses or at transportation areas. Um, signs can't display any pictures of cannabis products or any type of branding. Um, and that's, you know, within their property or on the exterior of the building. So there's um some pretty specific and comprehensive regulations around the packaging, labeling, and marketing of cannabis.
Here are the struggles with vaping and flavors and all of that kind of stuff. Is there any of those types of things? Effective, is marijuana cannabis affected by that?
Yeah, so so smoking, vaping of any product, the regulations would apply equally to cannabis and tobacco. So if you can't smoke cigarettes or vape, uh tobacco, nicotine, you can't do it with cannabis either.
How about the flavor issue? I I, my understanding is there's struggles now with the flavor of vaping and encouraging. Use by people. Is that allowed in marijuana cannabis?
The, so are you allowed to to make uh flavors of cannabis vaping? I believe so. I believe so, um, but you can't, you know, I think the the packaging restrictions make it very difficult to. Advertise that something has a specific flavor.
So the the struggles that we're having now trying to to stop the flavoring of vaping. Which you're assuming the flavoring is trying to encourage juice. It's not restricted, where, to your knowledge at this point.
So I'm just trying to look at some, so there, I mean, there are restrictions around. Additives to cannabis products that have to be approved by DCP, but I don't think there's a wholesale ban on adding flavors. I just think it's something that they would have to approve. So here is a map that um shows what some of the towns and cities in the state have done. In terms of prohibiting or allowing cannabis products. Um, the red dots are where cannabis has been banned, yellow are moratorium. And the green are no ban. That doesn't necessarily mean they've been allowed, but they haven't instituted a ban. And this is data collected as of September, so some of these have changed, but it gives you a little bit of a sense of. Where um where the various towns and cities stand and based on people.
Is that map related to that?
No, this is from CCM. What I gave you is from CCM. I'm not sure what the source, what's the cited source on that, Sarah?
Um, this was just put together by a local news outlet. Um, you can also go to the DCP's website, and they have a list of towns that have. Allowed and prohibited or imposed a moratorium, um, and if the town hasn't done anything yet, it just doesn't show up.
This is the DCP. This is a news outlet.
But if you want the real-time data, the, I can, I can send along.
They haven't made a decision. Well, I I just, I did a quick. Did a quick addition here, and thirty-two communities have approved it, uh thirteen have prohibited it. Thirty-five had uh uh moratoriums, and eighty-six just didn't respond, so. Uh, eighty-six didn't respond, so.
Wait a minute, did you get that calculation from this list? And I didn't get the whole list.
I just added them up.
Seems like there's so many moratoriums right now, but it's almost kind of meaningless, because we don't know which, that could all change one way or the other anytime.
Right, and and. Sure. Uh, Sarah, absent moratorium. When can people, well, people could come at any time and apply for a permit. To our planning and zoning, just, we're silent on it. We're, we are silent on it, it's, it's allowed by state statute, so anyone could come with an application. We have to plan a zoning to make a determination on whether to approve or disapprove, and that's the reason we put the moratorium in place. Was because it was statutorily allowed, um, so, uh, you know, anybody who is no. That is, you know, hasn't done a moratorium or has made a decision, is at risk of a zoning application coming before them.
Yeah, but that isn't what no on this list means. Alright, so when you take that out and you take the ones that are approved and you take the cities out of that thirty-two. Thirty-two have approved, but you take cities out of that, that's almost half.
I don't know if it's half, I'd have to, I'd have to take a look at it, but our neighbors to the west, Branford has approved it. Uh, Old Lime has approved it, um, I understand, Old Say, Westbrook has approved it. It's an update to this, uh, Old Sabre is in the process of approving it.
The approval is one thing, but you know, depending on what. You know, there's, there's approval and there's approval with so many restrictions that, you know, you accomplish other things. You know, that, there's approval and there's approval.
Agreed, agreed, and that's, that's the decision we're gonna have to make is what, what are we approving in ordinance?
I mean, yeah, I mean, to the decision point, I mean, the state made illegal, you know, doesn't matter what we think, the state made illegal.
But that's my, my good friend, uh, uh, Bill Dickinson in, uh, stop laughing. In Wallingford, he uh continues to make the point that it's uh not allowed at a federal level, and he says that means the banking.
Very real, although.
But I don't, I don't think Gilbert Savings Bank would be a, a funnel.
But anyway. Yeah, I I think, I was starting to make the point about Jesus, but that, you know. It is the law, so our, our. Our responsibility at this point is to. Move forward in the most responsible manner, and I think, you know, schools and places like that.
I, I, I am, not to tip my hand, but I am completely, we're gonna approve this, I'm completely. Um, like to be consistent with what we do with alcohol. It's, so they are now both substances that are regulated by Connecticut, right? So I would, I wouldn't see any, uh, I would see.
Time I talked to the police, the police were reporting or whatever it was, there were struggles with. You know, measuring impairment and that type of thing.
Have to deal with that if anybody drove through from. We still have that issue.
I understand that, but you know.
It would be nice to know the state of the art at the moment with. Present to them. That is incredibly helpful.
Point about that, yes, it's it's one thing to deal with it on a day-to-day basis, okay, but it's another thing. We have a location that becomes a, a destination point. You know, just as, you know, Branford, yes, they have their, they have their medical center in there, and it's a destination point. Stop at the light sometime, and you can appreciate what's going on, so, you know, there is a difference between having a location and not.
And part of that discussion includes the fact that Guilford residents will be driving to Branford or to. And when, and let's hope that they're not consuming while they're, you know, while they're, you know.
You know, so much of this discussion, both at the state level and even at the local level, to a certain extent, is around. The taxes and the money to be made. We just don't need the tax.
That's not the, that's not the base. Uh, what if, what if the, would it be nice to get some revenues that we could send over to Youth and Family Services and the day organization?
Sure, pay for the extra, you know, policing that it requires.
How, how long can we, how long can we keep moritizing?
As long as we want, but Jamie would like us to come to some kind of session, because we've got the zoning rewrite, which is gonna go to public.
Please don't throw us under the bus with the late delivery of this.
And, you know, and I think we should get something on the books just so that we're not, uh. You know, somebody's gonna test us, you know, we don't get something on the book, somebody's gonna put an application in, and then we're gonna have our backs against.
This is a crazy question, but if we approved it and then a year later decided we want it unapproved, you can't do that then, right, or can?
No, what you would do is you would prove it so restrictive that it's difficult, and then slowly back it up.
Sarah, did you hear that question? If we, if we move for, forward with approval, can we take that away in future?
So I, I think that, I don't think you could do anything to take approval away from an existing business. But you could decide not to grant any further approvals.
Our approval with so many restrictions.
Right. Just, just to go back to the, um, to go back to the content.
Two miles from a school.
Two miles, basically, put you into Branford. And actually, uh, if anyone's interested, uh, after the meeting, I have a map. Yeah, half a mile. We did a mile and a half a mile, and it's pretty, pretty.
It was pretty limiting.
And that's, that's the way you pass it, to get something on the book.
Just wanted to make one clarifying point on the the flavors and the additives, um, so you can't add any. Flavor or color that's artificial, um, so like a bubble gum flavor, for example, wouldn't be allowed, but.
So that's already.
Cannot, yes, correct. Um, cannabis does have a lot of natural flavors to it, so you could, you know, probably. Highlight certain of those, but you can't add anything artificial. Or alcohol, you can't mix alcohol with any cannabis product.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say can't make, oh, flavored. I don't do a drink.
So, um, I think you all were kind of anticipating the last couple of slides and that's just some of the various considerations, uh, that go into this decision. Um, obviously, there's the tax revenue that we touched on a little bit, um, but there's some uncertainty as to how that's collected and, um, you know, what, what are the strings that, or the hoops that you need to go through to collect that money from the state. Um, and it's supposed to be held in trust for the municipality. But obviously, we don't know how that's gonna work yet. Um, another thing that, that people are less aware of is that the town can charge any retailer or hybrid retailer up to fifty thousand dollars in an allowance for policing and public safety at the opening of any new establishment.
That's a new one.
That might be, that could be a game, that could be a game changer. But you'd have to, you'd have to actually expend it.
Well, so what, I mean, so don't they need, you know, license plate scanners or something to do that?
There's more detail there on this slide.
Public safety costs incurred to direct traffic now.
Stops him.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
Yeah, but public safety is anything, I mean, that's, you know, walking across. And you can throw anything at it. Not to concede, I'm more concerned about the tax, not, not concerned about the taxes. I don't think it's.
It's not the, I don't think it's the basic.
It's just another, she does tax you, we're not really involved in it anyway, so it's.
Well, but that three percent is dedicated for municipalities. So we, we'll have to consider it, you know, you know, how, how we collect it or how we get it. And then what do we do with it once we get it? And, you know, similar to, like I said, similar to the NIP thing, the, the NIP funds are now going to sustainable Guilford Task Force.
Yeah, I mean, if it evolves to be something like that, that's positive. If it evolves to be something like, you know, cars or boats.
Exactly.
And it won't ever be there unless the value was so great that it made it worthwhile for the state.
Okay, we have other considerations, sir?
Yep, just a couple. I think, you know, you've touched on many of these already. Um, but there are some pretty strict security requirements that go with any cannabis establishment. Um, and, you know, in some cases that, uh, data has found that cannabis establishments actually make neighborhoods safer, you know, that's not a huge concern in Guilford. Um, but something to note, if you're concerned of, you know, many people have concerns about security when cannabis establishments come into town because they think it's gonna bring crime and other drugs and things like that. Um, but that's generally not been the case. Um, and I, you know, I think the others of these, we've touched on odor, noise, um, you know, traffic potentially, um, and the ease of access by youth.
Where did you get your information regarding the crime? Is that anecdotal or is there any fact?
I believe, I, so I, I haven't read the studies, but I've heard about that, um, in, from Massachusetts. I can see if I can find something in.
Yeah, it'd be good to know who did the studies too, who paid, that's where that comes from. That's marketing.
Yeah, I think there's a natural tendency to think, invite the element of our community. I think the most suggestive likelihood, uh, is from a small to nothing. Uh, when you talk about the, the, the type of clientele. Uh, the reality is it's gonna be our neighbors and, and people that we know, um, who are, who in this community are up to this point.
Well, no question, that's what we like to think, but, I mean, you don't know about unintended consequences is the issue. I mean, yes, if we're thinking along those lines and it's another local.
If we were the only, if we were the only town in the state, but there's gonna, there's so, I mean, there's, I just did the percentages, it's almost twenty-five percent of the towns approved it. I realize possibly with restrictions, my guess is there's gonna be more. So people are not gonna have to drive from, um, Danbury to Guilford to get it, you know what I mean? And everybody's got, even right now, you know, it's close enough that, you know, you're just gonna go to your next town or two towns.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to believe too. And I just feel concerned about, you know, the controls in place that, you know, again, I refer to, you know, the evolution of the local liquor store to superstores, you know.
One of the, one of the other things that's been mentioned in terms of, uh, the security risk is this is a largely cash business, um, has been, has, has been largely cash business. That's where the increased security around the establishments thing, um, you know, that those are part and parcel to the security, to the, the security, uh, requirements relative to distribution and compliance with the, you know, the laws, so.
Alluding to our work in progress, I mean, that's what I get, it's, it's new to, to us as a community, it's new to us as a state. Yeah, I mean, it, it's a work in progress and all the things, Susan's point, it's the law now, so we gotta find a way to make it work.
What, what I think I'd like to do is, um, for those that have already approved something, uh, we might reach out to those communities, particularly those communities that, uh, more closely resemble Guilford, uh, to see what they have done and what kind of, uh, what kind of, what kind of restrictions are. Yeah, what they put in place down, it might be too early for them, for many of them to have any, uh, anecdotal evidence or hard evidence as to the impacts. But at least what did some of those communities do around, um, the, uh, the approval and conditions of it? Which might be helpful in us making decisions. Uh, you know, if we are more stringent than Branford, what does that mean? If we're less stringent than Branford, um, you know, what's the likelihood of retailers wanting to, to locate here? So, and how many?
The only other thing I'll add is, I, I do think we ought to coax it along a little bit. You know, I know we got budget cycle coming up, but, uh, I think, uh, I think getting something on the books is what's gonna be important.
Okay, and if we need to amend it, we amend it.
Yeah, like I said, you start off restrictive and you can always back up.
Well, Sarah?
How's Orange, what's Orange doing?
Orange just lifted a moratorium. And they have a, um, application that's being heard tomorrow night for its first, uh, retail establishment, which is gonna be a dispensary that's moving from Milford to Orange, become a dispensary and retailer together.
Did they lift, was the application in before, after they lifted the moratorium?
Kind of went together. It went together, the applicant, the applicant came in and requested the moratorium to be lifted.
When the moratorium was listed, they must have approved.
Then they have just, they just approved the lifting of the moratorium and now are working on the actual regulations and, and the restrictions that you're referring to. Along with the application.
Decide, so they decided to allow, and then they're gonna write.
It's a de facto.
Then they're gonna write, right.
It's a de facto allowance because they didn't approve or. They just let it fall to the statute, which says your zoning, your, your planning and zoning permits are what dictates, so it, it's a de facto allowance.
Right, so they had.
It's a special use permit, so it's.
Oh, so they had something in place.
A special use permit, which I think they, maybe, way the statute's set up, I'm not really sure. Um, but there's, there's more coming tomorrow night, for sure.
Trying to avoid that de facto.
That's exactly.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I guess that's where I was going.
Right, that's, that's, that's the goal, yeah.
What is you?
To have something in place before the moratorium.
So.
So you don't have a de facto.
What is, what is your tend?
The slightest idea.
I just looked, I called my husband, the answer on this chart is no, they didn't, they didn't respond.
Not surprised. Not surprised with that answer whatsoever.
If I could task all, all of us with, uh, some homework, which is, and we'll get a copy of this, um, presentation. Uh, those licensed types, or those four buckets of, or not licensed types, but the, the business type categories. If you, if you would take a look at them, start to think about which ones you'd think, um, uh, we should, that, that, that we should allow or disallow, uh, as we, as we go forward. Um, I'd like you also to start to think a little bit about, um, you know, whether or not we consider the same regulations, uh, in terms of proximity to certain facilities that are already on the books related to, uh, to alcohol. Um, you know, those kind of things, or, or more, um, or more restricted.
She said that we couldn't go, if we couldn't have a cultivator, how about a microcult?
We can, yeah.
We can't have micro.
But micro, micro cultivator is still five thousand square feet.
Ten thousand.
It can be anywhere from two thousand to ten thousand, and then it can grow an additional five thousand.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a pretty big, it's a pretty big operation.
So it could go up to fifteen, max.
What about?
Somebody came to us when this first started and they wanted to put something in.
On Soundview.
On Soundview. They had a warehouse location and they wanted, they were interested in the micro cultivator.
Yeah.
As I remember.
Yeah.
There's somebody like locked and loaded on our decision.
Yeah, something else, Charles, in, in Orange, it kind of, it's kind of a lucked out kind of thing. The applicant is looking to go into a former bank, which is a freestanding building with a safe already in it. Uh, but the freestanding building part is something that we, in our minds, we were talking, you know, as board of selectmen and the zoning board thinking about it. You picture this facility being part of a re, you know, retail strip area, strip mall area. Uh, maybe something, I don't know if you can, and I'm Sarah, can you, can you restrict it to just a freestanding building, which might take away some of the concerns of, you know, neighborhood businesses?
I, I would think you could do that for a zoning. I think you have a good amount of ability.
They may not want to, just.
I think the only thing is, you know, you, you need to treat like businesses alike. So if you're gonna, you know, if you're gonna have that requirement for cannabis retail establishments, it would have to apply to all the cannabis retailers.
Who got historic district? A historic district to approve, I mean, I'm thinking there are liquor stores on the gray.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think they have authority over use, they have authority over the structure.
The looks, yeah.
Advertisings.
Hey, we got a nice building. Fifty-two church or whatever, it's thirty.
Right next to the senior center, great place.
You know, a two thousand square foot facility for a micro cultivator is a forty by fifty.
Yeah.
And I think she said you'd, you'd basically need to double the size of, of it to effectively harvest it and run your business operations. I'm assuming that the twenty by fifty is grow area. Um, I, I, I thought that's what I saw, so.
How about clothing cultivation?
Uh, six plants, you're allowed up to six. And, and I don't think you can count your children as having, uh, having the, the ability to have six plants either, so.
Can we have five?
So at our next meeting.
Disposal of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Gary.
But one of the, obviously, one of the challenges with these facilities, with growing facilities, and we talked about this, uh, the other day with Sarah, is they're water intensive. Um, water intensive, so. So it's, you know, if you're not, not on a water line, you know, you know, with the Connecticut water, uh, or with, uh, regional, regional.
It's the same problem we run into with, uh, breweries.
Exactly.
The, the, frankly, the, on the discharge side, even more.
Discharge on the breweries, but, uh, what I understand is the technologies that are being applied in this industry are similar to what is being, uh, done in regular cultivation, hydroponic growth, which is recycling the water. They recycle as much of their water as they can, because that's what they grow. Uh, so some of those technologies, you know, collecting excess, but, you know, most of the water goes into plants, right?
Yeah, I'm making sure to feed this pinch back.
Geez, it would fit, too close to school though, maybe.
What's?
Thousand feet. You'll find a way. You'll find a way, okay. All right, well, Sarah, that was incredibly. So if anyone has any, uh, questions that come to mind, uh, I wanna forward those along to myself and Tracy, and then we can, uh, go to Sarah, uh, with, with the list, so.
Um, I, I know we're trying to end this, but that survey that G10 or Gen Z or Green Z or whatever, whatever they, Zen City, Zen City, sorry, I'm sorry. Um, and we discussed that once and we never really thoroughly discussed it, did we? I mean, I couldn't, the part that confused me at the time, and maybe I'm the only one who didn't get it, was that weighted average and it came out that.
We have.
I, we do, because I would love to hear that, because I, I, not to tip my hand, but when people ask me, what, what do you think? I say, I feel that I would like, I wanna do the will of the people. I wanna know, I mean, I know we're not gonna get thirty-two thousand answers, I mean, twenty-three thousand answers, but, uh, that's gonna impact me, I, I, you know, and I never quite figured out that survey, so.
I have, uh, I don't know much about, uh, conducting polls and relating, I, I, I'm not sure there's anybody, you got a good friend, uh, we can ask it, we can ask you, um, on that. But they did, I, I got a one-page, uh, explanation that I'll share with, with all of you guys as well.
And were you gonna tell us about the second?
Because that's typical with, with polling data, is there are certain pieces that you have to discard, uh, and there are certain pieces that you have to, for valid, statistically valid data inputs. So I don't, again, I skipped the stats and that's in, uh, in college, but.
Um, what about the engaged party, can we discuss that, the website?
Yes, yes. Um, I'll get you, I'll get you, I think it's, Tracy, is it, is it, is it up and working right now, Trey?
No, Matt, I'm gonna put it up this week. I can send them all a link though, um, so they can see.
Oh, great. And it's gonna be pub, obviously pub, publicized, because several people, again, I spoke to, I never saw that on the survey, and I know it was publicized, but, yeah, people can say that.
We still need some dates of here. Do we send moratorium? We already did, did an item number, uh.
Oh, we voted?
Yeah, we voted.
Oh, okay.
Before our next meeting.
Okay, you voted, yes. It's okay.
I've been there, no worries.
All right.
So are we gonna, is our next meeting gonna be long again, or longer?
Yeah, let's, uh, let's see if we're gonna add, uh, maybe an hour on it.
I didn't mean that in a negative way, I think, I, we don't wanna, we want these things to stay in our.
Hope you found this helpful.
Very, very helpful. Yeah.
All right. Sarah, thank you very much for your participation, uh, and we look forward to further engagement with you, I'm sure, uh, at some point. I think one of the things that we had talked about is it might be pretty helpful, Sarah were to talk to our planning and zoning folks as well, because once we establish, uh, what criteria we want, there is gonna be, um, opportunity for interpretation, you know, through the zoning code, so we wanna make sure that they're not blind sighted.
And challenged.
And check, you're right. Okay, so Sarah, thank you very much for your participation.
Sure, thanks for having me, and I wrote down some of the follow-up questions, so I'll, I'll be in touch.
Great, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
I don't know who you're gonna task with this, but I think just following up, just to begin with Branford and, um, Eastline, because they seem to be the two closest to us right now.
Right.
And somewhat similar in demographics and things like that.
Well, I'll go through, I'll go through this.
Because I noticed Canton, Canton is sort of similar.
Should, should we go through our dirt?
You know, yeah, actually.
Yeah, it's funny, like, the dairy and it's no.
Sims Berry is no, because they're in our dirt.
Hard to contact them, because just because they didn't answer the CCM survey doesn't necessarily mean they haven't made a decision.
That's why you gotta compare it as to this, the official list.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll pull the, uh, DCP.
Yeah, Lucy, I'm calling just because somebody else does it.
Yeah, we have.
No, okay, we're still on.
Curiously, North Haven is no.
Yes, we are.
But I do think, yeah, I do think getting something.
Respond.
No, no, it's just, yeah. No, I realize that, I just think it's usually, I get it.
We don't have much time they had either.
I was, I, I had in our local paper that I didn't respond to something, well, you know, I.
Right, and, and CCM, CCM is relying upon the members providing.
I didn't get to hear when they called and that, that meant I didn't respond, so.
I always love the voter list, we see, are we recording?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a time, why don't we, why don't we, this is a conduct, uh, motion to adjourn?
Almost second.
That's, uh, non-debatable, I'm assuming it's unanimous, thank you. All right.
Tracy, we're off.